Okay, call the meeting to order. Please stand for the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge.
Thank you, Mayor. Father, give us guidance as we deliberate on the items before us this evening. And Father, may our decisions be righteous in your sight for our benefit and for your glory. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On honor of the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, we got a proclamation to recognize the Run for Dillon Foundation. And I know that Councilwoman Kelly Pickens has done a lot of work on this, so I'm going to ask her to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor. The proclamation for Run for Dillon, whereas Dillon Durrell, a student at Guyer High School and a member of the school's cross-country team, passed away due to sudden cardiac arrest on August 13th, 2020. And whereas Dillon's parents, Lisa and Gus Durrell, established the Run for Dillon Foundation in his memory and now work to bring awareness to cardiac arrest through events and outreach efforts. And whereas, the Run for Dillon Foundation has since funded over 150 heart screenings, installed AED devices at parks in Denton and Corinth, provided scholarships to local students, hosted multiple hashtag Run for Dillon races, and reached countless families with invaluable information on preventing and responding to incidents of cardiac arrest. And whereas, the Run for Dillon Foundation has recently funded the installation of an AED device at the Commons at Agora Park, which will serve as a critical resource for all who visit in the event of an emergency. And whereas, the city of Corinth is honored to be part of the Run for Dillon Foundation's exceptional work and is immensely grateful to the Durrell family for all they have done and continue to do. Therefore, it be resolved that Bill Hydeman, Mayor of the City of Corinth and the Corinth City Council sincerely thank the Run for Dillon Foundation for their donation to the Corinth community and are honored to be a part of Dillon's legacy.
Thank you. Now, is there someone from the foundation here?
Mayor Dillon's grandmother is here, Ms. Ernestine. I'll have her come up here now. And she would like to get a photo of everybody if y'all are willing to do that.
Yes, well, we'll come down and get a photo, too. But she has, she's more than happy to do the podium.
Captain Hunter is a dear friend of their family.
Yeah, I grew up with Gus, Dillon's father, and his wife Lisa, and so I'm pretty close with the family. And so, thank you all for doing what y'all have done for this family. But this is Dillon's grandmother, and so, and she would like to have a photo with you guys. Unfortunately, Gus and Lisa couldn't be here tonight. They have, Gus's mom is ill, and so he had to make a trip to North Richardson Hills to be with her. But in place of Gus and Lisa's, Ms. Ernestine here.
I was not prepared, since I just got a call that, you know, his mom is not doing well. But I appreciate everything that y'all have done for them. And they've worked so hard to keep him in, so he'll be remembered. And it's hard. That's all I've got to say right now.
Thank you. We'll get a picture.
Didn't have time to write a speech.
No, you don't need a speech. You're good. They're gonna come around here, we're gonna stand up in the front, we'll get a picture real quick. Ms. Kelly's got the proclamation there.
Are you gonna?
I'll be back here taking pictures.
Oh.
Thank you all for being, taking a picture.
I promise, I will.
Is that peanut butter on this?
It might. No, it's like, it's right here.
Please limit your comments to three minutes. Comments about any of the council agenda items are appreciated by the council and may be taken into consideration at this time or during that agenda item. Council is prohibited from acting on or discussing items brought before them at this time. None? Okay. I'd entertain a motion at this time on the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Ready for discussion? It's unanimous. Item number six, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing. Consider testimony and act on the request of the applicant, Long Lake Development LLC, to amend the street regulations of Sub District C of Plan Development 73, PD 73, with base zoning restriction of MXC, mixed-use commercial, and SF2, single-family residential, on approximately 106.5 acres, with the subject properties being generally located south of FM 2181, west of Park Ridge Drive, and east of Serendipity Hills Trail. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Melissa Daly, our planning director, will address this item and answer any questions you have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Oh. Sorry, let me get this pulled up. Good evening. So, the request this evening before you is an amendment to PD 73, which was approved in this, just this past December. This is 106-acre mixed-use development with three sub-districts, Sub District A, B, and C. Subject District C, which is where the request is being made, and that's this purple part on the left-hand side, has a base zoning as SF2, a single-family residential. It's a proposed gated subdivision with 33 lots. Subdivision, or subsection A and B, excuse me, the other sections of this development would be, have streets constructed as required in the city code. Streets A and B in Sub District C, I'm sorry, this is getting a little confusing, so let me just point it out. Streets A and B are this street in this C area, as well as this street, have in the zoning code, or the zoning requirement for the PD to be constructed per our standard street sections, which was to include five-foot sidewalks, curb, and gutter. Oak Bluff Drive, which is the street on the southern end, sorry, I'm having a hard time getting this to work, and the southern end here, is currently exist, and so that requirement was not extended to Oak Bluff Drive, that that could remain in a, as a rural design. This is a typical residential street section at the top. The rural residential street section is what the applicant is requesting for the streets A and B. Our standards, private streets are required to meet the same standards as public streets in our code, which is two 15-foot-wide traffic lanes, curb and gutter, and five-foot sidewalks. On this particular development, because of the topography and the applicant's desire to work with the topography, we allowed for a steeper grade of up to 12% for the streets within the PD. 6% is standard. We typically allow up to 10%, so this is, extends beyond that to make sure they could work with the topography. The proposed amendment is to allow for a rural design similar to the existing Oak Bluff Drive, which again is already built, two 13-foot-wide traffic lanes with barge ditches and no curb or sidewalks. Staff recommends not amending the existing street standards for the following reasons: curb and gutter streets provide a lot of benefits, most especially maintenance, as well as effective drainage, improved pavement and property protection, and enhanced aesthetics and safety. Of course, sidewalks provide for comfortable and safe pedestrian environment in all neighborhoods, whether they're gated or not gated. They act as a link from individual houses out to amenities and larger trail networks, and that's especially the case here, of course, where this is intended to be a very walkable community, whether it's in the gated part or the ungated part. And their important quality of life component. There's a lot in our comprehensive plan that speaks to that walkability and sidewalks and connectivity, as you can see here on the right. The sidewalk, there are a number of trees in the development, and the sidewalk can be straight or it can wind to protect or preserve those trees, so there's a lot of flexibility in the PD to have that sidewalk wind through the trees in order to preserve them. Today, we received some information, the applicant is now requesting a four-foot crushed granite sidewalk area or walkway area. We're not recommending that for the maintenance challenges that creates as well, especially with the topography and the possibility of the movement of the granite and mud and so forth that can accumulate. As of the date of this report, the city has received one letter of support, which should be in your packet, and no letters of opposition. Staff does recommend a denial of the requested amendment. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended denial unanimously at their regular meeting in April. And I'll be happy to answer any questions. And the applicant is here as well.
Are there any questions from council?
I have one. You said the DG is more, is harder to maintain? Because I know, like, when I walk in my neighborhood, there's always, like, the sidewalks are coming up, or they're cracked, or, and I have DG walkway in my backyard, and it's not any problem to maintain.
Because particularly of the topography here, that it tends to move, you have to add crushed granite to it regularly, it tends to move both downhill and sideways, and, you know, can accumulate mud, as opposed to your backyard. This is something that will be communal and have a lot more traffic on it and require a lot more maintenance.
Is there any other question from council?
What, Oak Bluff right now is, is no sidewalk, no curb and gutter.
Right, that was constructed a number of years ago.
Okay. Any other questions from council?
Is it ever feasible, or, I don't know, look, okay, like, if you just had a sidewalk on one side of the street and not on both sides of the street, that way people could still walk, but you wouldn't have them on both sides of the street? Or is that something that's not done?
It's not something our code allows for. I mean, of course, you have the ability, this is before you tonight, to allow what you want to allow, but it's not something that's allowed in this zoning or in our code. We require sidewalks on both sides of the street.
No other question? Okay. All right, at this time, we're gonna open a public hearing. And if the developer would like to speak, he'd more than happy to speak.
Evening, council members. Tristan Poor, I'm the engineer representing the developer. I'm with Spire's Engineering, and my address is 109 Park Circle, McKinney, Texas. Uh-oh. Someone's helping me. Yeah, so what we're bringing tonight, you know, when we started the design process, we submitted this plat to the city, and we had barge ditches, you know. Typically, when we do these estate lot developments, they have the barge ditch design, it's a little bit more of a rural country feel. And so, that's when we got the comment and realized that the PD was defaulting to the standard street sections, and we didn't have a rural street section specified. And so, we brought this amendment. You know, one thing I'll point out, the Serendipity Hills to our west is an estate lot development that has barge ditches without any sidewalks or trails. And then, of course, the existing lots to the south, along Oak Bluff, also have the barge ditches and the trails. One of the big reasons that we do this is because these gated communities are privately owned and maintained. And so, those 33 residents, the HOA that they create, they have the responsibility to maintain the streets and to maintain the sidewalks and the drainage infrastructure that goes in with the development. And so, it adds quite a big maintenance burden to those residents when you go from having a rural road section with barge ditches to now you have a larger pavement section with curb and gutter, but also the storm infrastructure is under the pavement, you know, in the street, and so there's all the storm pipe that they have to also, you know, pay for over time, where the city's not, you know, taking on that burden. So, I think when we went to planning and zoning, there was a, really the big concern that planning and zoning had was about pedestrian safety. And if you only have a rural section and you don't have barge ditches, you know, where are people gonna walk? I live in an acre lot development, a gated community, we don't have trails, you know, people tend to walk on the edge of the road, and it's, there's not a lot of residents, and so people just drive slow, and you kind of watch out for your neighbors, and it's kind of the feel of the community. But we do understand the concerns that were brought up, and so what we've amended and proposed is that we do a trail on one side of the street so that the residents here still have a dedicated space to walk, but at the same time that we do a decomposed granite material, which is very common, the example, I put a couple pictures in, on these plans, and these are examples from a development. One of them is that I did in McKinney, which is what you see here, it's actually along a thoroughfare. Sometimes, the decomposed granite does get washed out, but the HOA, while they're doing their maintenance and their lawn care, they, they just fix that, and it's usually raking it or putting it back in place. If it's installed with the, with the garden, kind of plastic guardrails on the edge of it, it's usually, sits in place a lot better, so. And then, this is another example where you really have that feel where you're trying to meander throughout the trees, it's a little bit more of that country estate feel, and not so much, you know, the curb and gutter and concrete sidewalk is really a suburban subdivision neighborhood feel. And so, we were hoping that coming before you guys, we've addressed kind of the safety concerns, but also helping minimize some of the maintenance responsibility of having two, you know, five-foot concrete trails on both sides of the road. And I think Michael will speak to the developer a little bit about some of the trees, and if we follow the standard city section, really having some difficulty on removing some beautiful trees out there that we're trying to kind of nestle the road between these trees and kind of meander this one trail on one side of the road, so.
Michael Engel, 3971 Summit Ridge Drive, Corinth, Texas. Yeah, so, really, I think that we do want the, the country look and feel of these estate lots. We understand the safety concern, and so, yeah, we are willing to make the investment on creating the connectability of these 33 homes and the residents to other parts of the development. And so, you know, it's not a matter of saving money or maintenance for us, it really is about aesthetics. And so, we think that we can achieve kind of both by creating a trail that meanders through both sides of the street, but also, we would be committed to make the investment and build it all up front and not have to wait for each home to sell so that that builder builds their part of the sidewalk, because reality is, as this thing gets developed, there are gonna be parts of it that'll have sidewalk, then parts that wouldn't, and so we're willing to make the investment, put the whole thing in up front, and so that would exist, you know, as soon as we start, you know, developing all the paving. And so, the other thing is, we are gonna have decomposed granite trails that are gonna connect our structural sidewalks and trails down to the lake, because Cora won't allow us to make any permanent structures or improvements on any of that, but we can put in decomposed granite trails and manicure all of that. And so, we feel like it's gonna lend itself to blending with the rest of the trails in the development, so. We also contacted Corinth Police Department, did open records requests to make sure that there wasn't any pedestrian struck, or strike incidents that we weren't aware of on Serendipity next door or throughout Corinth, and there was only one, I think, at Park Ridge and Meadowview or something like that last year at that intersection. So, you know, while I know it's a concern, we want to address it, and so that's why I think we're willing to, you know, come up with a compromise or a solution to offer a trail instead of, you know, a sidewalk on both sides of the streets.
Is there any question from council?
Thought the streets were being dedicated.
No, the, kind of how you see on the image here, it's a, it's an access drainage and utility easement, and so everything within the gated portion of the community is privately owned and maintained.
Private streets.
Yeah, and I, one of the things Michael was saying is just per the ordinance, these trails go in with the buildings, and so what you end up happening in a traditional subdivision is the builder will come in and build the sidewalk as they build the homes, and so it's very segmented. And so, what they've agreed to do is they'll go ahead and put this DG trail in now so that you have this connectivity from day one. You know, this estate lot community is not gonna be fully built out right away, and so it really provides for that first homeowner kind of that immediate access and connectivity.
Are there any other questions from council?
Would you consider doing curb and gutter and no sidewalks?
Yeah, I think if, what we-
I, I'm in Lake Dallas every single day, and that is ditch and culvert, and it, it looks terrible. And it's, it's only gonna stay as nice as the people that are willing to maintain it. And that's my concern, is that over time, it may not be maintained as well, and then it'll become a city issue and stuff starts backing up, and they'll call, and whatever. So, the, the culvert is, is where I am having a little bit of a problem, because people, it'll be gated, the streets will be wide, I think people could, you know, no one's gonna be racing down there, I would hope not. But the curb and gutter, I think that's important. So, just maybe for future, like, down the road, you know, initially, it's gonna be fine, but down the road, you know, you want to avoid a potential problem, right? And I think having a curb and gutter, you would be doing that, you know, trying to avoid a potential problem later. And the ones in Lake Dallas, they don't look good. They fill up, they're overgrown, and, and then the water doesn't flow, and it just, it looks a mess. So, it's just my two cents. So, I was just curious if you would compromise and maybe not do sidewalks, but then do curb and gutter?
Yeah, sure. I think, we probably have a, you know, our preference, and there's probably tiers to that. We'd like for council to make a motion for an alternate to the typical, which is the concrete curb and gutter and the two five-foot, but our tier would probably be, the barge ditch would be our preference without trails, just because that's what we see in estate lot communities. But going the step above that would be doing a trail on one side of the road, curb and gutter, but doing a trail on one side of the road that's a decomposed granite. And then, you know, really, we, we could, if material is ultimately the concern, we could do one concrete sidewalk or trail on one side of the road. Again, it's not, we're starting to get where we just have a lot of concrete nestled in between the trees of this topography, that's not really these, you know, very nice homes, it's not really the community that Michael was trying to create, but we're open to doing that if, you know, that, we feel like the private maintenance responsibility, HOA, kind of alleviates the city of that concern of it being DG versus concrete.
As long as they maintain it, right?
Sure.
I mean, there's a-
And that's the thing, too, we have some pretty high HOA dues to cover maintaining all of that. We would essentially encompass those as part of the maintenance plan, so it wouldn't be a responsibility of the individual homeowner, we would roll that into our community maintenance, so, I mean, there wouldn't, it's not likely that they're not gonna cover the cost of the maintenance for maintaining those, so.
I should've done my homework, but you said that Serendipity?
Yeah, the community to the west, it has barge ditches, no curb and gutter, and it doesn't have any trails. It's a more traditional estate lot community.
I mean, that's an upscale area.
Yeah, and to Michael's point, I mean, these are million-dollar-plus homes, the, they're gonna want to fix the DG trail if it gets washed out or something, that, you know, the HOA there, that'll be a high priority, yeah, of the residents that I think will be living in this community.
Right.
But alternatively, if it's concrete, it's, you know, I think this was brought up earlier, but you, you have more cost incurred if the concrete's cracking or it needs to be replaced. It's a much higher cost than having a landscaper go out and fix the decomposed granite trail.
And you can put a stabilizer on that DG, too.
You can on both sides, that's how they install it, yeah, on both sides of it.
No, not-
Probably come by like a geogrid underneath it, yes.
Or in on top of it.
Oh, that's like a glue material almost, is that what you're talking about?
And we may need to confirm this, but I'm suspecting the neighborhood to the west is, there was a different standard at that time on the curb and gutter requirement. I think it just wasn't required at that time.
Yeah, Serendipity is probably 30 or years older more.
I suspect we allow ditch and culvert at that time, by code.
Yeah, and we're not arguing, there is not a standard for a rural street section in the city of Corinth's manual, there's just one local street section. And so, you know, typically, we would have addressed this in the PD, it was just overlooked, but typically, you would not want a one-size-fits-all for a standard 50-foot lot community and an estate lot community, there's just different needs for those types of end-users, so.
So, I just want to make sure I understand, if your preference is to get what you asked, asking for, but you think you could design a neighborhood that would meet your aesthetic goals if you have curb and gutter streets with the one granite path? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm. I don't know, as far as like curb and gutter, like, if there's different profiles that we could present to you guys, it would make sense, I don't know if it makes sense to have like a stand-up curb, or we could have like a nice rolling, lay-down curb.
Well, I think what I'm thinking to propose is that the street specifications don't change, it'll be a curb and gutter street per our ordinance, but if, if you say you've been out there and you've walked the property, it's gonna help aesthetically to have a granite path, and that's the HOA's responsibility to maintain, I mean, I, I think I can live with that.
And I, I think I'm safe, and so our biggest concern is the, is the drainage, is, I want to be clear about that.
And that is gonna tie into the city system, so if it doesn't function properly, it becomes our problem.
Yeah, and one, one of the deals with the drainage on curb and gutter is, all the drainage now is in the street. So, you, you have your DG trail, you really don't have to worry about much washout, it's just the rain that's falling on the, the trail. So, we're not having a ton of water wash through that now.
So, Mayor, I would move to approve case number ZAPD 25-001, major PD amendment to Plan Development, with the additional stipulations that the road specifications not change per the current PD, that they remain pursuant to our code, but the sidewalk specifications that are in the current code, those be omitted and that the developer be allowed to place a eight-foot, and we can talk about that, decomposed granite pathway for his design specifications, but it needs to run the length of the road, it can meander on one side or the other. That's my motion.
I'll second.
Okay, before we, before we can vote on it, we gotta close the public hearing.
Can we, can we comment on the language? We provided some language that may be helpful for the PD amendment specifically, if that could be included in the motion, I don't know if I can share that, but it's, okay, okay.
Yeah, probably not.
Are there, are there anybody else?
I just wanted to address the width, and you did the width of the trail, because what they were showing was four foot.
And eight foot is consistent with our current sidewalk requirements, right?
We have a five-foot requirement, but a trail, particularly if it's only one side, is eight to 10 foot.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else in the audience that wants to speak to this issue? Oh, okay.
Because an eight-foot trail is worse than a five-foot trail, because now, you're really, you're taking out four trees with an eight-foot trail. So, we had proposed a four-foot, because that's kind of the, it's, we'd be okay with the five-foot, it's the typical for this issue session. This isn't really a trail that's hard, it would be eight-foot, it's just a trail along the roadway. So, I think it hurts my, probably, if you have a good, an eight-foot trail next to the road, taking out four trees along that roadway.
Is that trail only accessible to the homeowners that live in that gated community?
Well, they can meander it, that's kind of what- Well, they can meander it. That's kind of what... I mean, I'm going to be, I think six foot is kind of my breaking point. I don't know why. But I mean, because the four-foot trail, you can't really walk by each other very effectively. I mean, that's why we changed it in our code.
Okay. In your motion, is your stipulation...
My motion is eight. If somebody made an amendment to six, then I would probably vote for that, too.
How do you guys feel about a six?
I mean, I think that's okay. At the end of the day, I'd love to do eight the whole way, but maybe where we get to some trees where it's like, I don't want to cut a forty-inch tree down to meet an eight-foot-wide trail regulation. So, if I can have five foot, six foot, I think we can work with that. So, yeah, we just don't want to take out any more width than we have to, so.
Just do a minimum of six? Do them at five, six?
Yeah, and I mean, we'll do our best to engineer that to make it work. But yeah, there's just some, there's a few trees that can't be the entire road, and they are right at the limit with the five-foot sidewalk. So, we're going to just have to see what we can do to make that work, but...
Okay. Did you second this, Kelly?
I did.
We're a little all over the place with the Roberts rules. Do you?
I did. However, if we, do we need to get more specific on trail width? Or minimum or state? Because in Sam's motion, it was eight foot.
What I would suggest is if you rescind your second, and either make a second more specific to allowing six-foot trails, or I'd be happy to second.
Okay, I'd like to amend my second, and amend it to a minimum of six-foot width trail. My second.
So, it's actually either a, an amendment to the motion, which would mean your amendment is amended.
Okay, I would like my motion to amend.
To six foot.
To make the trail a minimum of six feet in width.
Someone can second your amendment.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
And now, we'll vote on that, and then we'll go back to the original.
Is there any...
We'll vote on the amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
And then whoever does the minutes can make this look like it made sense.
It's my first day here.
Okay, so, are we going, are you going to be able to use a voting machine on the amendment and the motion?
We can use it on the amendment, and then we can...
Roll call on the, on the regular one?
Yeah.
All right. So, we got a, we got a motion and a second on an amendment for six-foot wa...
A minimum six-foot width walk, trail.
Trail, okay. All right, so, is there any further discussion on that item? Cast your vote. That's unanimous. Okay, now we're back to the original motion that Councilman Burke made. And we have a second on that. Is there any further discussion on that motion? If not, you want to call the roll?
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mr. Garber?
Yes.
Ms. Rell?
Yes.
Ms. Henderson?
Yes.
Ms. Pickens?
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number seven, conduct a public hearing, consider testimony, and act on the ordinance amending the City of Corinth comprehensive plan, revision Corinth 2040 to adopt and incorporate the 2025 active transportation plan. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, Glenn Baker, he doesn't work here. Glenn Barker is going to present this item. Answer any questions that you have.
I'm so used to it from everybody else, not you. Mayor, council, this is the active transportation public hearing. Council reviewed the works, in the workshop, the active transportation on 220 and 410. Planning Zone Commission approved it unanimously on 414, and the Parks and Rec Committee approved it on 324. I wanted to just kind of go over the goals and give you a quick high level on some of the changes that happened, and then get your vote on that. So, the reason why we're doing it is so that we're grant-ready. It aligns with tax dot, federal grants, planning, see, I didn't even kind of paste that out, and connectivity. It improves connectivity, access for parks, trails, neighborhoods, safety accessibility, supports complete streets and ADA compliance. And it also gives public works guidance on what the projects are for the future and which way we go about them. So, some, the plan did change since the workshop, and so, I promise I'm not going to go over every little bit of this. But the updated plans, we updated the cross-sections for Lake Sharon. We added Quail Run, Carpenter, we added, Park Ridge, we updated those plans. And I have all the cut sheets if you wanted to see these. The cross-sections for Old Seventy-seven were added. Silver Meadow became similar to Creekside, and Post Oak changed a little as well. If you wanted to see any of those, I can pull them up. Anyone? Yes.
I mean, what is the major change, like, or update?
So, Lake Sharon is a shared-use path on the north side. It was just an eight-foot, now it's a ten-foot.
Okay.
Quail Run wasn't even in the thing. I could show you all of them with you.
So, you're just making small adjustments or additions?
Yes.
Got it?
And then, the implementation strategy, I wanted, I went over this with Planning and Parks and Rec, that this year would be North Corinth Street, where's my mouse? North Corinth Street would be removing the center turn lane and adding parking. And then on Corinth Parkway, not North Corinth Street, we'll go from the little slashes and add the, from here to here, Katy Trail to Katy Trail, we'll add the bike lanes in that area for a trial run area. That'll give people a full loop rather than a bike lane to nowhere. And then, future projects would come to council, and that'd be whether it's in budget, purchase approval of a construction project, or a workshop if needed. Any questions on that? And then, we could go over the cross-sections if needed, but they're minor. Oh, there you go. Never mind. Corinth Parkway, this is what we're doing with Corinth Parkway. We talked about this year, making these changes. So, for, starting at I-35, we're going to have the parking with the bike lane. And then, past the community park, we take away the park lane and just add buffer lane for the biking. So, that would be this year's project. And then, yes, ma'am. Yes. Yes, ma'am.
With all the new building and things like that, that's going to be, seems to me like that's really going to be backed up. I don't know. It just seems like two lanes won't handle that.
So, it's under that 10,000 number, that they recommend that you could do that diet and cut it back to be a bike lane area. Since this is downtown, we definitely want to slow down the traffic. And that was Parks and Rec, big thing, is that it would slow down the traffic in this area. They, they fly coming through there. Most of the people on the Parks and Rec Committee are in the area right next to either side of the community park, and they fly. They were ecstatic about cutting it down to two lanes to slow down the traffic. Planting, zoning was the opposite, right? They, they didn't want to impede in slowing down the traffic. They wanted people to be able to move and stuff like that. That was their concern in this area.
But they did approve the...
Yes.
Glenn?
Yes, ma'am.
This is all paint and...
Yes, sir.
Right? I mean, in other words, structurally, we're not changing anything.
Correct.
So, if this is a wheels-off disaster, then we're talking about paint, re-striping, not tearing anything up or...
Correct.
Because the 10,000, under 10,000 was account for now.
Yes.
Because there's a lot of stuff coming in. But...
If I could add to that, we actually had two consultants, look at this, both Fries and Nichols, and then we have a circulation study going on for the downtown as well. Both consultants did an analysis looking at the future growth. So, we provided the downtown plan and all of the developments that are coming, and those that we don't know are coming, looking at the MXC zoning and what could come. So, they did consider future growths, and still, both independently recommended that we could go down to this scenario and still have traffic flow.
And I do want to add, that, that was our number-one question and concern was is, from a capacity standpoint, we don't want backups coming down Corinth Parkway. So, I just want to put that out there. We were concerned about that, too. But the traffic and the speed, and that was also a huge concern of ours, and trying to slow it down.
Any other questions on that?
The railroad tracks, do they take that into consideration, the train?
Yeah, the lane wouldn't narrow down until well after the track, like you wouldn't narrow it before you get to the track.
Where, where is it narrowed?
It narrows right after the track.
Okay.
Starts to pinch down, the road actually pinches down naturally that way right now.
Oh, sorry. The buffer zone is just, initially, is going to be just paint?
Yes.
Is that ever going to have a, some type of a structure?
Yes. That's my next slide.
You have a sound.
Okay, sorry.
Mayor, sir?
Go ahead.
So, as we move forward, we wanted to start talking about the dividers. He asked us to bring the things. So, what we will be looking at are dividers that are low-profile. A driver runs over it, it's not going to damage the vehicle. It's a little bump in the road, and they get back on track, those type of things. We do not want the stand-up white things that people run over and they just stay broken all the time. They're ugly. They get black. They're just nasty. So, low-profile lane dividers. But then, in the parking areas, we need to separate the parking from the bike lane itself. This is probably, the one on the right is the only one that I found that had, that wasn't custom designed, that was kind of fancy for the downtown area. But most likely, you'd go with the one on the left with the planter, either rock or just a concrete curb straight across, something to stop the vehicles from parking into the bike lane. Any questions, comments on those? And then, then we get into the actual Carpenter Road, which is currently a ten-foot lane, and it'll change into two elevens. And I could go all the way through the list if you wanted to look at any of them, any of the changes. I didn't put all of them in here. It's only the ones with the changes.
We're going from ten-foot to two-eleven feet.
Yeah.
That's going to be more than paint there.
Yeah, but that's a gravel road right now.
Okay, okay.
So, that's long-term. I'll go down to Lake Sharon update. So, it's the exact same right now. It would be two fourteen-feet lanes. So, that's kind of the change that would be there. We're just going to use the existing concrete and make the changes. And Lake Sharon would be my request for next year.
One comment that I'll make is that I did talk to Charlotte Wilcox, the mayor of Highland Village. And they have it down there, they have already done the striping on their streets. And in talking with her, and she said they just had a review with it, with their police chief, and they found it to be very effective. They also put in their bike lanes where they have them striped, they have a speed control mechanism mounted on a pole there that tells you how fast you're going. And, and quite honestly, they said it's been very effective. I also talked to TJ Gilmore, mayor of Lewisville. They also have sections in Lewisville that are striped, and they've been very effective in slowing down traffic. So, I think your, your initial intent here is very good, and I think by striping, we'll find out if it has any impact on our speeding on North Corinth Street. So, I thank you for your efforts.
Any other questions? Ask for a motion.
Okay. No question? Then I'll entertain a motion on this item. Oh, no, we got a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience that wants to speak to this? Okay, so we're closed public hearing. And I'd take, make, or entertain a motion on this item.
Mayor, I move to approve case number COMP 25-0002-2025, active transportation plan as presented.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay, business agenda. Consider an act and change order number three to acquit the contract for the FEMA floodplain mitigation project in amount of $85,506 and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documentation. Mr. Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, Mr. Glenn Barker will cover this item. Answer any questions.
Mayor, council, so the cost of this change order is $85,000. It'll bring the total cost of the project, or engineering for this project, to about $500,000. This change order will address additional project management requirements, drainage study, updates that were needed because of the land sales, and construction plan revisions because of the land sales, and then grant administration, just because it's taking a little longer for the FEMA. So, they're still working on the FEMA grant. So, just because of the timing, we need additional hours for that.
Any question from council? Okay, I entertain a motion on that item.
Mayor, I'd move to approve the acquit the contract change order number three for the FEMA floodplain mitigation project in the amount of $85,506 and authorize the city manager to execute any necessary documentation.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Cast your vote. It's unanimous. Okay, council comments and future agenda items. The purpose of this section is to allow each council member the opportunity to provide general updates and our comments to fellow council members, the public, and our staff on any issues or future events. Also, in accordance with section 30.085 of the Code of Ordinances, at this time, any council member may direct that an item be added as a business item to any future agenda. Mr. Burke?
Nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Garber?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
Ms. Rell?
I just want to remind people to make plans to come out this Saturday from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. and help keep Corinth beautiful at the Butterfly Gardens. They're going to be spreading, I guess we're going to be, spreading mulch and making log borders. Kids are welcome and can paint rocks that will be placed in the garden. So, make it out to keep Corinth beautiful's Saturday thing.
Mrs. Henderson?
I hope you guys don't get tired of me always bringing up chamber things, and if so, somebody can tell me. But June 25th, we're having a joint mixer with this town of Little Am. And I just think it's a great opportunity for our two cities to, like, do some more things together. So, I just wanted to, I know you all get my newsletters, so look at that. And July 31st is our Discover Lake Cities. And if you have never been on that tour, it's a lot of fun. And we go through all four of the cities. And Corinth, we're actually starting at the Agora this year. So, anyone that could be involved, you can look at your newsletter and get signed up.
What's the date on the Little Am?
June 25th. It's at the Am Hotel, and free food and beverages.
Ms. Pickens?
Sponsored, sponsored food and beverages.
Yes, I do. I would like to propose a future agenda item for discussion regarding the formation of a volunteer committee to help members in our community. The committee would be dedicated to assisting other members in our community with tasks that they may not be able to perform themselves, or maybe under, be able to, not be able to do, perform because of cost. I was, someone reached out to me that was inquiring about our reimbursement program that we have, and wanted to know if they could volunteer to help. And that's not how that program is designed. And I thought, I wonder if we could get a program that there's a list of volunteers in our city that would be willing... program that, uh, there's a list of volunteers in our city that would be willing to help, um, our committee of, of volunteers that would be willing to help some of our, uh, residents that may meet and need help with, um, any repairs on their home, or, or something that they're just not able to do. So, if we could just maybe have a future item to where we can discuss maybe, uh, forming a committee like that.
Anymore? Is that it?
That's all.
Okay. Mr. Campbell?
Nothing, sir, thank you.
All right. So, at this time, we're going to go into executive session. It's five-five-one oh-seven-four Personnel Matters, and section five-five-one oh-eight-seven, Economic Development, and we're going into executive session at seven-twenty.